Listen who wishes to record the meeting?
I would like to.
While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion at the moment, please move mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation.
Thank you, Marshall. So our first item is the Sustainability Committee. Jennifer Forster is here to give us an update. Kevin, I don't know if you want to say any introductory words?
No, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Select Board. Thank you, Jen. So for today's purposes, I thought it was appropriate just to give the board an update and where we're at and also the next steps regarding the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Right now, throughout the process, there's been a number of people who've been working on the sidelines but interested in this this effort to around sustainability and formalizing this committee. And so general speak to that a little bit in a second, but what we'd like to do is share with you some names, some people who have expressed an interest to date to fill some of those seats. And then in addition to that, right now, there's I think two seats that there hasn't been. We haven't solicited people at this point, but there's two seats which in essence are still open. And I guess in a sense, these seats haven't been filled. Obviously, we have to go through the formal process, but there's two seats that six seats for people have shown an interest, as I understand it at this point in time. So I just wanted to make sure that we understand, obviously, that the board will vote the people through depending on their merit and and interest. But there is some opportunity if there's people that the board would like, in addition to the people who have already shown an interest for consideration for the positions as well around the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And so right now, the hope is just to share with you those those names. Have any further discussion against any questions, but these people will be filling out a volunteer application, as is the protocols. And then subsequent to that, if appropriate, bring them forward to the board for consideration, which that time will take those two weeks and likely come back with a ask for a formal vote to point. But just really grateful for the opportunity that we have in front of us around the Sustainability Advisory Committee and all the initiatives we've undertaken and the initiatives we will undertake. It's really important to bring those interested with other ideas, creativity to have a seat at the table to help us through the process. And thank you, Jen, for her leadership in helping make this all happen. So I'm going to just take a step back. Jen, please fill in any blanks or provide any additional information. And then obviously, as we go, the board has any questions, please let us know.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. And I would just like to echo Kevin's remarks and thank you very much for this opportunity. It's been a long time in the making. We first had this conversation the day the world shut down, I think. So it's it's been a while and we're excited that we can kick off hopefully in 2020 and really make a difference. So we've had, you know, some offline conversations with those in the community we knew were interested in participating in sustainability initiatives. As you know, we also participated in the Tomato Festival back in September as an effort to garner community support and gather ideas and just kind of have that conversation with people as they were available. So there's been a couple of different ways that we've been engaging with community members. That being said, there's always room and there is room for more participation. We've sort of framed it as the opportunity to be either on the Sustainability Advisory Committee or act as somebody on a work group. Because certainly up to eight people, they can't do everything and we're going to need other volunteers. So we have a pretty good list to pull from and so far we have four people who have raised their hands, including myself, to participate on the committee. So you all know me, but I am very interested in focusing on waste reduction, composting initiatives, recycling and all of that. That being said, I can certainly dig in and do any research that's necessary. I think I bring some enthusiasm and organization to the process and be happy to serve in whatever capacity is most useful to the town. Additionally, Thomas Warren has raised his hand. He's interested in working on initiatives around preserving and protecting ecosystems. He believes that this is well aligned with his interests. His job is managing marine fish populations for the federal government through the NOAA and the National Marine Fishery Service. And he served on the Topsfield Conservation Commission for five years in the early 2000s. Recently, he's been working with Citizens Climate Lobby, working towards putting a price on carbon. Brad Bissel is another person who's raised his hand. He is interested in focusing on renewable energy. He has an interest in solar batteries, electric vehicles, and he is interested in expanding available options in those areas to the residents of Topsfield. And Andrew Pizar also, I think you probably all know Andrew from his work with the school committee. He is interested in focusing on outreach, but he also knows a fair bit about protecting local ecosystems and can be helpful in those efforts as well. So that's the list that we have so far. Kevin would be serving as a non-voting member and we also need a member of the Select Board as well. And then we have room for two other residential seats if we if there's interest and we can find somebody.
Thank you, Jennifer. That sounds like a great group so far with a lot of good background. Could I ask how you're reaching out to people to let them know about the opportunity? There may be a number of people who aren't aware yet that this is even underway.
Yeah, good question. So we did start with a group of interested residents based on kind of like a network of people that we have that included Zilly Bijou and and others. And so we've put out a lot of feelers just based on kind of the list that Zilly had accumulated through her efforts with Green Topsfield and and other committees that she serves on. And then, of course, we were at the Tomato Festival, so we were advertised as a table that was going to be there and then we participated for the duration of the festival. And that's been the extent of it, other than, of course, the publicly posted meeting agendas and minutes for the Select Board where it's been an ongoing conversation. So I'm open to other ways of getting the word out. I am not on social media, so if it's going to be through one of those avenues, I'm probably not the best person to do it. But we we're open to either recommend recommendations for specific individuals or a better way to kind of get the word out to the community.
Thank you. I do think social media is a great vehicle to make people aware. An awful lot of people are on social media and
I know, I'm just not.
Oh, yeah, no, it wasn't hard to
But I'll find somebody who is.
There are lots of people who are skilled in it, so that might be a good vehicle. And then also for the board to be thinking if anyone has an interest in participating on the committee. We can discuss that when we get the roster of names that that come forward. So from a time perspective, Jennifer, are you thinking the January 3rd meeting to come forward with the applications and the people themselves to make introductions? Because we've always done that two-step process for new people coming on board. We meet with them and then at the following meeting, we conduct the vote. And the the way it's set up, the next Monday meeting is actually the end of January, so it takes up the whole month. So probably good to get in on the 3rd if you think you have a good roster.
Yep, I will. I will check people's schedules for the 3rd.
Jennifer, do you think, I beg your pardon, Lynn, sorry?
I was just going to say, does anyone have any questions?
Look at that, how timely is that? I mean, maybe Kevin or Thomas or Brad could be the call to action on a residents of Topsfield type, you know, note where you say we're looking for volunteers. Would they be, would you be cool with that? Would that be okay?
Jennifer, could you hear Kim? Oh, or were you talking to Kevin?
I was I was talking to Jennifer, but
Oh, sorry. I thought you were asking Kevin.
Or Kevin, doesn't matter, either one.
I'm fine with that if Kevin is or if if there is somebody who has the authority to post on behalf of the town of Topsfield, I think that's probably most appropriate than like a random resident.
So one of the things that we we try and tend to avoid at this time on the residency, to the residency pages to is to necessarily use that at this time as a vehicle. We're actually making movements to create our own platform around social media, which will be that vehicle. What we've done is, you know, in this case, like Jen or somebody else who's excited for this, it might be appropriate just to choose a member just to share that off our homepage once we have it up there as a volunteer opportunity. And then someone can get directly directly to us. There are times where we might post and we can, we have the social media platform with the police and the fire. And there's a number of ways to get there, and I think we can absolutely, Mr. Brown, is to we'll get something out on the social media page for sure.
Great.
Another thing too is, you know, I think everybody probably, do you like Jen or Jennifer, by the way?
Thanks for asking. Jen's fine. You can call me either, but Jen is
It could be, and we've done this in the past, we don't need to have all eight to get the committee started. So if we don't want to lose time, we could come forward or you could come forward with the slate that you have, including one of us and Kevin, and those folks could get started and then we could add later on.
Yeah, and we were purposeful in the charter, if you'll remember saying up to eight, so I think that gives us some flexibility. And I'm certainly not opposed to having a full committee of eight, but I think we have a good start and I wouldn't want to hold off to wait for more members.
Great. Any other questions or comments for Jen? No? All right. Well, thank you again, Jen, for all the enthusiasm and pulling this group together and moving this forward. We're excited to see where it goes.
Thank you. We are too, and I look forward to hearing who from the Select Board will be joining us as well. So who the lucky winner is.
Good luck, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our list is the downtown revitalization update. Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know there's been a lot of efforts in this for some time, as we all know, and appreciate all the support and the partnership and the great ideas that the board has provided as we've moved through this since I've been here and I know before that. We have the ECDC, which we created, as we all know, and we had a meeting earlier this week. And there's just a number of things that are starting to happen, and I thought in the work session would be a great opportunity to share with everyone and an opportunity to dig a little deeper and talk a little more in depth about those efforts collectively. So this is more just a general update and an opportunity to ask any questions beyond just my TA updates for discussion purposes. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of give a quick update on what we've been working on lately, some of the next steps that we're looking to take. And then obviously, questions, thoughts along the way are welcome and appreciated from the board as well. So we've we've been busy. One of the things which I'm going to start with and then kind of back into the things that are going to happen before that, it's something I'm super excited for, is we feel strongly we have enough enough wins, I'd say, around the revitalization effort. And the trajectory we're taking that we really want to kind of let people know what we've been up to. We always talk about fostering investment, identifying people who might want to be spend their time and their money in this community to make it their home from a business perspective, obviously residential perspective, but from a business perspective. And so what we're going to be doing in the late spring, early summer is what we're referring to as a business showcase. And the showcase is an opportunity for us to invite members of our community or business community and beyond, but also people from anywhere from Boston up to New Hampshire and beyond to join us to hear about the things that we've been working on, the things that we are, our vision, our focus, the opportunities that exist in this community. And to really celebrate things we're doing and the things we're working towards. And so we have through the ECDC subcommittee we created that's helping with this. I wouldn't, actually, it's not really a formal subcommittee. It's 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 two people within the group that are helping the effort. And we have a couple of other people who are supporting it, one a town employee and another is a member of the community. We had our kickoff meeting this morning and it went really, really well. We had some really great conversations, general conversations about what we're looking to do and things that we, how to sort of build that that showcase out. And so some of the things which we discussed at that time, it kind of included, you know, time of the year. Like I said, we're thinking late, thinking late spring, early summer, we're talking about the right location. We're talking about some of the things we need to do, and I'll get back to that because that's part of the things that we're working on prior to this event. Talked about invitations, how we do that, you know, cost considerations. And I think just the basic at this time, it's very preliminary, it's it's opportunity to introduce us to the community. But also, we look at having potentially a keynote speaker. We'd look at having a presentation about Topsfield and what we've been doing, including graphics, some of the amenities, the rail trail, Ipswich River, Audubon Society, our schools, which are fantastic, as we all know. The history, the agricultural relevance of our community, the downtown improvements, Route 1 corridor, portable housing, master plan potentially. Data, vehicle trips, access, things like that, liquor licenses, Topsfield Fair, fact that we have a project review team in town now. And one of the things we talked about as well is actually doing a community survey to talk about, you know, what if you, we've done this, I know, a couple of years ago through the MAPC process led by Chair Broudis. But re-engaging the community and having another opportunity to get some 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 input from the community that we could share at this meeting. But what we like, the community wants, I've heard time and time again, a restaurant, right? Like if we have that in our data that we can share, that's something we can point to. And then I think really important is talking about our existing business community and the work that they're doing and the partnership we have with them from a leadership, community leadership perspective with those people who already have invested in our community, their time and their money with us. And then the hope is to get somebody, a guest speaker from the business community, talk about their experiences working with us, working in Topsfield, what it's, the successes hopefully and the wins. And then review some of the specific opportunities that might exist. And one of those, for example, is going to be, in my mind, the Highway Garage RFP. Because we'll have an audio, captured audience, people looking at what are your opportunities, right? What, why am I here? And that's something we'll share. And there's, you know, some leasing available on Route 1, for example, there's a couple of properties, larger properties that in the last year and a half have given back square footage and that are available. And so we want to highlight some of those opportunities for people and talk about other types of opportunities that might exist in town. And then the thought event is to take a tour potentially around the town to show what we have in our downtown, one, show these these opportunity zones as well. And then basically wrap at that point. But that, I got a little bit more in the weeds, I think, than I intended tonight, but it's really exciting. We had a really great conversation today and it's it, most, if not all, this will likely change to some degree. But the conversations are happening and we're moving towards something I think that'll be really helpful for us in our future efforts around economic development and the downtown revitalization. One of the things I mentioned with this is we're targeting summer, spring, summertime. We've got a lot of work to do before that, starting with our website. We know we're at the finishing touches of launching a new website. We know we have a social media presence that we're going to be rolling out after the new year. That's our new front door. We want to make sure that information is relevant, updated, and that people, when they get an invitation to come to this event or they hear word of mouth about the event and they go to look at our website or social media presence, it's up and running and updated and accurate. So we're working through that as we've always been, but that's something we'll need to do. We'll need to get the RFP for the garage in order, which we've been working on. Donna Rich is doing a fantastic job helping us on that. Also, we'll need to, you know, we we are fortunate enough to receive $100,000 earmark in a recent bill from the state, thanks to Senator Lovely and her hard work advocating for the community and others. That it's going to help us pay for the wave binding signage or part of it, not all of it, that we are looking to do through the past process we've undertaken around design and identifying the proper locations for the downtown wave binding signage. So we'd like to have some of that installed prior to the events as well. And then there's, we've talked, there's another grant that's that we've applied for for our master plan as well, which we're waiting to have confirmation on what what's going to happen with that. But that's potentially something we'll be starting kicking off during the process as well. And I have reached out to Secretary Keeley's office or our offices reached out to his office, the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, and trying to find a time to meet with him to talk about all the things we've been working on. But also that maybe the opportunity to partner on this event, helping us promote it through their networks, but also possibly being engaged on the day of and participating if there is an interest. So there's a lot of work right now ahead of us, but the groundwork's been set to achieve these different items I just talked about. Those are all sort of bigger items which we're working through that are part of this business showcase and and which we're very excited for, like I said. There's a number of other things that we're doing, the ice rink.
And before you get to the ice rink, could I just add two points to to what you said? The timing of this is really great and I was very excited when Kevin said he was going to have another meeting in January with the community. Because we promised them that we would go back and touch base with them about the RFP before it went out there and before any final decisions were made. So this is an opportunity in January to get their input as well as provide them with an update of what has happened since the plan that we put together a year and a half ago when we solicited all their input. We don't want them to think we're going back to square one and just asking for their input again. What we're going to be doing is to share with them, this is what you told us, this is what we've done with it, these are our next steps. And we're back again for some input at a more detailed level as it relates to the RFP and some other areas. So it's a continuation and and as Kevin said, keeping in touch with people to let them know that we heard them and that we've been working on it. So I think that's terrific. And with the signs going up, the flowers being up, the RFP being out in the spring, it's going to be very exciting when that business showcase hits because everything is converging. So it just sounds very exciting, Kevin. Great job.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the January one. That was something too we discussed, which I didn't mention. That's important. Just a couple of other quick things that I'll mention too. We talked about the artwork in front of the library, which we're really excited for. And we've got one more piece that is there. The other, which I'll mention as well, is the ice rink. And so we had, I got an email. We're tentatively scheduled for the next week to have Damian, who's the vendor, who's manufacturing, fabricating the ice rink, will be coming down from Vermont to help us install it next week. Weather and a couple of other items that we're working out that could delay it, but we're we're targeting next week, which would be great. And so we've started looking at also the lights around the rink and some other items that can go along with it. But really, what I wanted to also mention is that we have a donation that's been offered for the rink as well and some of the other costs associated with it from the KBL Foundation. Kevin Ben, who had passed away, an avid sports enthusiast in town. I've had a chance personally to meet his parents, just incredible people. And they've come to us in the past about possibility of helping with some funding for improvements to the Proctor basketball court. That's a much larger infrastructure project and this is a really great opportunity for them to be involved with this ice rink. And Don Ben Leonard and I had a conversation last week and they offered and it was really great that how they feel about it. And it's exciting that we'll be able to partner with them on it. So I I know that was a piece of the conversation on the funding for this and we're just, we're grateful for the for the help.
Can I jump in again, just because we were so excited about this at the ECDC the other night when we found out we definitely have funding and it's something the Van Lentons are excited about. Kevin has been working on designing a sign that will go up beside the rink, giving credit to the Van Lentons for the donation. And also, we're still kind of talking this through, but there's a point in time where the fire department will come over with the hoses to actually fill the rink, which will be very exciting. And so that'll be announced whenever that's going to be scheduled for everyone to come and see it. And then once it hardens, we'll have an official red ribbon cutting. And again, we'll have the Van Lentons there and thank them and recognize them and make it a whole event. So we've got a couple of good opportunities to get the town together with something exciting all around the rink.
Cool. That's great.
Those are the latest on the downtown revitalization. I know, we all know all the other things that we've been working on, some of the things that we continue to do. But like I said, it was, this was a good time to to give everyone a little more depth on what we've been working on. And again, just couldn't do it without the support of the Select Board and the team behind all this here at Town Hall, helping to make all that come together. So thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, the next item is the
Can I just go back and ask a question to Kevin?
Sure.
You mentioned that the old highway garage and the RFP, and it almost sounded like which comes first. You mentioned that you're trying to get the RFP out on the street, but that also when you're going to do a group in the summer, you were going to ask them for their inputs on the highway garage. So it it was interesting to think that we can try to put something out on the street, but are we interested in what developers are thinking about as we try to put something out on the street? So I don't have the answer, but it does seem to be an issue of which comes first and to what extent. I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, just to that point, Dick, Kevin has been reaching out to developers, so he's in discussions prior to this actual showcase. So I'm not, I don't know how many people, Kevin, you're going to be sitting down and talking with that input, but the showcase will be a much broader audience. So he won't, there might be 100 people at the showcase. Kevin might be talking to 15 or, you know, yeah, fingers crossed there'll be 100, but
But if you had 100, that'd be very interesting input as to the kinds of things that we might want to put in an RFP. Wherever we are is fine, but it just seemed to me that it was interesting that we refer to the summer session as an opportunity to talk with people about what the use of the highway garage would be.
Yeah, they'll do, yeah, no, for order of operations. So we have in January, Madam Chair spoke to the fact that we're going to have a meeting with some updates on downtown signs, the design for some of the entranceway that we went through with DHB. And part of that will also be re-engaging the community on the garage and giving them an update. Because we, last year, before we did anything, we went out to the community to get feedback. What do you think about this building? What would you like to see happen there? Is there a desire for the community to see something more than what it's currently being used? And I mean, obviously, we had 100 people on the call and it was overwhelming support to board. And opportunities I've had at that time too, to engage individual businesses, some real estate professionals, people who might have an interest in that space to say, are we going down the right path with this building? Is there an opportunity here? Every indication we've had thus far has said yes, that this is an opportunity. And so between now and January and then from January to the RFP being written this spring, winter to spring, is when we'll be asking for that that input from the community first and foremost. And then also from the business community that might have some thoughts on what might be an attractive type of proposal to put out on the street. And we might take some of that advice and run with it. We might not. It might not fit us, but it'll be helpful to have that as we build it.
So the RFP, Kevin, that isn't, to my knowledge, we're not specifically saying we're putting out this RFP to ask for restaurants to come in and make a bid on this property. It it'll be a little more general, won't it? Because there might be some ideas out there that we hadn't even considered that would be amazing for that piece of property.
Absolutely. It depends. I think the best way to say it depends, right? So I think as we have more input from the community, now that we've gone through some of the technical things, items that we had to check off through town meeting and the subdivision of the lot, rezoning and the subdivision of the lot, rezoning and the disposition, and now working towards looking at other communities, working with MIPC, trying to understand what other places, other communities have done when it comes to revitalization, using an opportunity like this to help create more opportunity. I think the next few months, as we engage the community again and give them updates and hearing what they would like to have happen, the RFP will be geared potentially towards certain types of uses, but absolutely open to, it won't be a, the way we, I've done RFPs in the past, there's sort of a vision for what we want to see happen, and you get points along the way in the RFP process from the selection committee, based on the responses you have each question. Most of the questions, we brought questions about the types of uses, the revenues, things of that nature, how it impacts economic development, for example. There could be some items in there where there are bonus points or points geared towards what the community says they'd like to see, if that's in fact, say, a restaurant or something like that. It won't mean that that's the end all be all, it just means that that might be something that's spelled out in the, so people who have that type of, who are looking for that type of opportunity to locate their business, might say, oh, okay, that's, that's sort of what the community's looking at at this time. But it will allow us to, there won't be anything that ties, binds us to any very specific, especially on that building, because it's such a unique building. We want to, we don't want to limit our opportunities for people who might be interested to, to come up with some creative ideas for it.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Kevin? No? Okay. The 2023 budget, Kevin, an update?
Absolutely. So we continue to move forward with our budget process. All but one department I've had a chance to meet with two times, my final meeting, once in October, once this past two weeks. I have one more meeting tomorrow with one department. It's starting to come a little more clear what departments' needs are, what they might be looking at, looking for potentially. Budgets will be due next week on Wednesday of next week. And then over the course of the next two weeks, led by Catherine Gabriel, we'll pull that together and come up with our omnibus version one that will be distributed, the tail end of the first week in January. And that'll go to the select board, that'll go to the FinCom, and we'll continue to move forward with our budget process. We are on schedule, and I'll just say personally, this is my third time now, maybe my second and a half time, because I came in in December, my first year during the budget process. Understanding the organization through the budgetary process is really important, really helpful. And I think there's a lot more this year that we're looking at from a future of the organization that is going, I think we're well positioned now with how we've been operating and understanding what we've done really well, and opportunities to do better, how we might address that in the operating budget going forward. But the guidelines that the FinCom set, set out was zero percent, zero percent increase on the other, which is the same recommendations we've had the last three years prior to this year. We've done, I'd like to say the team has done an amazing job managing through that. It's, you know, four years of zero growth is sometimes challenging, but we've been creative and we've been able to manage it, and kudos to the team for finding ways to make it happen. I know I've had discussions with department heads who, on their own, are negotiating the term, you know, contracts, saying, you know, there's a two percent escalator, calling them and saying, this isn't the year, can we punt on that this year? Will you give us a break? And those vendors saying, sure, we'll do a zero percent this one more year, or one percent or something like that, just to help us out. So every contract we have, we take that approach, try to reduce some of our costs. We've reorganized a couple of times over the past couple of years. Highway, water, park and cemetery, successfully reorganized that with the recreation component added in, and a net savings at the end of the day from a personnel standpoint. There's a lot of other examples that we, we have. One of the things I'm working on this year to accompany the budget and discussions is sort of a look back over the last two years of what we've been doing and looking at the future, projecting out some of what our expectations are from some of our costs, and also how we want to make sure we're managing and delivering the best possible service for our community within the constraints of what we have to work with in a fiscally responsible manner. So that's something I'm working on now. My target is early January to have that slide deck completed, and I'd love the opportunity to come back to the select board and share that with you folks, obviously, as well, just so that everybody has an update in a sense, and an idea of sort of what we're thinking and how we're thinking about it. But it really is, we have an amazing team, we say it all the time, and they truly believe, you know, we're one of the best teams out there, if not the best, when it comes to how we operate and the services we deliver and in that fiscally responsible way. So we're really excited for this process and excited to deliver a balanced budget again this year, and working with you folks in the FinCom. And so if anyone has any questions about the process, timelines, or anything to expect, as I understand it right now, more than willing to take any questions anybody might have ahead of the budget being submitted and distributed to the select board early next month.
Kevin, you mentioned January, you were going to let us know about some considerations for the organization or something. Could you give us an idea as an example of what you're referring to?
So there, there is the potential that there could be some, for as an example, Mr. Dan, maybe a retirement in the near future that we know might happen within the fiscal, next fiscal year. What does that mean? We're, I want to make sure we're reflecting on that position. What's that job description? Are there ways to do it better, differently? Do we move some of those responsibilities over? Do we do it differently? We also have a unique opportunity with the ARPA funds that, similar to the Excellence in Health Grant that we just received and the support that the Health Department will receive through that, ARPA might help us with some of the economic development goals that we've had in the past, the last two years, an economic development planner was something that we've, we've put in the budget as a recommendation from the MIPC Downtown Revitalization Report. Both years, as we balance the budget, we've taken that out, understanding that, you know, we have some limitations when it comes to growth. ARPA could be one of those opportunities. Now, that's outside our operating budget, but that's something from more of a global look at how we're operating. We can find additional support to help us with a master plan in the future, even the, oh, the business showcase will happen before the fiscal year. But taking that and working with potential investors and helping them identify and navigate the processes, that might be something that's worthwhile, or even the potential to help us with our agricultural community, there might be an opportunity to bring something, somebody on in a part-time basis, on a temporary basis while the grant's available, to help support those efforts. That's an example. Another example might be, and I see Chief Hubby's here, so I'll point to the Police Department. We've all worked very closely and together through the collective bargaining process, but also through Chief's efforts to organize the department in a way that's fiscally responsible, but also delivers the necessary services, all in consideration of police reform and requirements from a reporting standpoint. And so becoming a little heavier on the administrative side in the Police Department, and I mean that in a positive way, making sure we have the right resources there, in the right org chart to support that. There won't be any real changes per se this year, but it's an example, like the reorganization of the park, cemetery, highway, and water department, where things have moved around, but the end result is, we believe, a better representation of what we need, but also a potential savings, and we know of savings that will come along with those efforts as well. So those, I mean, I could probably talk about more, but those are just some examples, Mr. Dan, of some things that we're looking at. I know the Fire Department's another example, where there's a real need.
So it's just an example, though, seriously, and it may not be the case, but it is an example, you're saying that the administrative work that's done in the Police Department might be done more efficiently, whether it's through use of computers or not doing something we're doing today, or some changes that the state may have made as to what we do or don't have to report, such that the overall administrative cost will go down in the future if we can reorganize properly, order of magnitude, that's the sort of thing you're talking about?
In essence, yeah, I would say it's.
Okay, thank you.
The hope, it's always the hope. It's always for. But I would, I'd mention the Fire Department, I do want to make sure, I, I, there is a, we, we have a fantastic group of people working in the Fire Department, both are calling our full time, and Chief Collins Brown is incredibly passionate, incredibly talented, and we've been working, too, the same way Chief Hubby and I worked on, is what's the future of the Fire Department? You know, we've transitioned ambulance in a different way, there's revenues that are coming in as a result of that, and the call numbers are just staggering when you look at them year over year over year. And so what is the right model for that? And so Chief and I and Catherine Gabriel have been talking at some length about what's the future of the Fire Department? What do we, what do we think we need to build towards over this year, next year, and the year after that, potentially? But that's the type of thing we're talking about. We, we're now, and I feel comfortable enough in my role here that, you know, we have a really good understanding of how we're rolling and what we're doing really well, and what do we need, where are our opportunities to maybe do a little bit better as well, through the support of the budget at the end of the day.
So as to not be too surprised at things, for example, if you know that there's some information coming out of, in this case, you said the Fire Department, where things are changing a lot as far as number of calls, I think was the suggestion, we would certainly, or at least I would, I'm sure the board would, certainly appreciate getting some reports, whether they be on a quarterly basis or annual basis, whatever it is, with enough detail to understand what's going on, so that we're not presented with a surprise that says, tomorrow we need to do the following, because if we're aware of the sorts of things, we may be able to make some suggestions, or you may be able to make some suggestions about way to be a little bit more efficient, or change the way things are starting to go, so that we can be more efficient.
Absolutely. That sounds like, that's perfect. Yeah, no, we're built.
To give us the data, we'd, sooner is better than later.
Yeah, we want to make sure we have, yes, as soon as we kind of have everything kind in the direction we want to head, we'll be coming back, just like Chief Hubby and I did, Chief Collins Brown and I will come back to the board and to the FinCom and give a really detailed analysis of what we're doing now and what the goals are going forward and the data that accompanies it. Absolutely.
Kevin, I was going to ask you something that I think builds on what Dick was just saying, but, and if this is, and if you'd rather we wait for that late January test, you know, to get this answer, that's totally fine, but I'm wondering if there are any departments under particular pressure right now, where you anticipate, hey, we're going to have a bit of a knockdown drag out, that we could start thinking in advance? But I think Dick just articulated it pretty well, that you've got data to collect first, is that right?
Yeah, so the meetings I'm having with the department heads is really, really helpful, because we can sort of, I can look at it a little bit from a macro perspective, as individual departments sort of layer in what's, what they're doing and how they're doing it, and maybe possible changes we want to consider, and look at the revenues that come in in general, how does that look this year relative to potentially next year or the year prior? And then also look at, look at the needs against other needs, right? So, you know, we, we won't, we can't ask for everything, we won't ask for everything, we'll make some value judgments and move forward, things that we think are the priorities of ours, and what we think is the most important, to allow us to continue to deliver the services, and hopefully build off of the, increase those services if we can year over year. And so my hope and my goal is anytime we make any type of adjustment, and say from an organizational standpoint, people's side, it's, it's justifiable through data, and there's potentially savings in other places that can offset those costs, because we do need to have a balanced budget, make any and all efforts to get there when it all to the end of the process. So we're going to do our best to have a really good explanation for anything that we come, come with this year. Budgets early.
All right.
Not going to name that department, but we're going to have to, okay, that's fine. I think it is premature for that, Kevin.
Yeah.
Premature for what, Kevin?
Well, I, I always like an early heads up, if there's going to be a problem with, you know, X, Y, or Z department, early warning's better. But I, I totally trust that Kevin's all over it. And this being my first time going through the process, I'm not exactly sure of the order of things, but it sounds like our meeting at the end of the first week of January, or the information we'll get from Kevin at the first week of the, you know, the preliminary omnibus, will, will answer a lot of those questions.
Kevin, are you anticipating?
Sounds good.
Okay. We had talked before about some positions that we might be able to get through the state money, which is totally outside of the budget, whether it's economic development planning or something to help agricultural, you know, the missionary. Are you anticipating, from what you were just saying, that you have, you believe in your discussions with both chiefs, that you'll be proposing some reorganizations and some shifting for this budget this year?
Chief Hubby's budget is, when we went through our last budget round, we made some of the modifications that we were planning for, for this coming year. So they're already mostly accounted for, if not entirely. But there is sort of, like, for instance, our model from a three, three, two, we feel comfortable with a three, two, two. And so we've budgeted two additional officers that have been the last two years during the hiring freeze vacant. And so through the negotiations, the collective bargaining, looking at our models of what's the most efficient way to run that operation, we're going to be looking at a three, two, two going forward. So anticipate one less full-time officer, in essence, coming out. But that allows us with some of the savings that come there to, to ensure that we have the right administrative components to our executive officer side, right? And making sure we have the, the right leadership to ensure that we're making all the correct reports, we're not falling behind, if anything, we're leading when it comes to the requirements around police reform and certification.
And in the case of the Fire Department, are the changes that you were talking about going to be hitting this year's budget, or the one that you're developing right now?
There's a.
More long-term?
Yeah, so there's a significant need that, that's just clear from a coverage standpoint. We're busier than we ever thought we were going to be in, from the Fire Department side, in ambulance parts, and the ambulance side. And that's okay, that's what we all kind of eyes wide open went into this process with. The result of that from a strictly financial side is that our revenues are, are good, they're better than what we initially projected and thought they would be. They're heading in that, into that direction. Result of that is that there's certainly a reliance that we're delivering the best possible service and have twenty-four seven coverage, so that when somebody needs us in the middle of the night, we've got the coverage. And so there is a real consideration as we look at where our threats are when it comes, if you look at from like a SWOT analysis perspective, what's our threats? It's making sure we have the right type of coverage and ensuring, and we've built towards that over the last few years, towards a place of, of trying different models. And so the expectation would be that the revenues that are growing in the Fire Department, and the amount of calls that are increasing, which is wear and tear on our team and our people, that we take a hard look at our model of how we're staffing the Fire Department now and in the future, and not just next year or this next fiscal, but the fiscal after that, and fiscal after that. And so those are the conversations we're having right now, the same way Chief Hubby and I had them before we brought something back to the select board and to the FinCom. And so the budget process being right now is the right time to have those conversations. And we're, we're getting into those data, we're looking at, and we're looking hard at that to help us inform decisions, and we're looking at the different models that are out there, and we're just, it's a really, with the transition down our ambulance service, it's an opportunity to take a hard look at how we're doing it, because now we have new revenues, in essence, that are coming in, that can help us understand, you know, okay, there's, there's additional cost here for this, because the, the cost of our ambulance or, or the revenues of our ambulance service, because we're offering, we're going in this direction. But all that plays into it, ma'am chair, and the plan is, it's early, I have, we're still working through it, so I don't want to, you know, say this is what we're doing or not doing, because we're not there yet. But there's a lot of conversations that we're having, just to understand it. Same thing with the Highway Department and the Park and Cemetery Department. We're, this year, I'd say we're rolling up our sleeves and, and getting into the weeds, Park and Cemetery, no pun intended, getting in the weeds with the, the operations in Super Ten Wilds, for example, that he has now has one full year under his belt, and we're having conversations about what, what works, what's not working, you know, can we pull resources over here to over here? Similar to how we did with the Highway Department and really becoming more of a DPW than a isolated siloed, multiple sub-departments within a department, and that's worked incredibly well. The team loves it, and the efficiencies of the operation have been really, really good. um in how we're able to deliver that services. All the result of the leadership of, of Super Ten Wilds and uh the teammates, our teammates who are making it all happen, so.
Kevin, quick question just on the dates, because if we're looking to um change somewhat the model of the fire department, when do we have to have the, the budget finalized? Is it end of March? Sooner than end of March?
My recollection and it's, we'll submit the budget in January. Um, per the schedule, I think we vote on the um omnibus level two. Omnibus level one will go out Wednesday, the fifth. Omnibus level two, that's the one after the select board and us, we've reviewed it like we've done in the past. That we're targeting February four. So that's when we'll have those discussions about what's in the budget, what it represents and what we're looking to do. And then during that, through that process or thereafter that process is when the FinCom starts to, they've already looked at the budget, they already met as with delays, not as they met with the departments and I, after we submit version two, our second step in the budget process, uh FinCom will really dig into what our, say, over askings are or what we've done in the budget to maybe move per the guidance, reduce a line by two thousand here and add two thousand over there.
So that's a really tight window. You know, we've, we've got six weeks or so to have that budget firmed up. Can you get all the analysis done with the fire department to influence this budget? That just seems really quick.
We've been working on this for some time, so it's not like we just started yesterday. I mean, Chief and I, Chief Hubby and I probably spent twenty-four hours in meetings talking about the future of the police department over, you know, multiple weeks, months. Chief Collins Brown and I have done the same thing over the last few months. We, this conversation's been happening for some time. It's ramped up more recently in the last month plus. And each time we sit down, we get a little bit further along in the process of understanding the operations. Again, keep looking at what other communities are doing, looking at what the needs are, the, the threats, the opportunities, weaknesses. And um, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, at some point we need to come to you and the budget process is part of that. We'll come to you folks when we meet and explain what we're looking for and what the needs are and why it's a priority or maybe it's not.
So that's like the first, second, third maths week in January to have that discussion, because we would have already gone past the version one. And version two is due on February fourth, so we're talking about getting together in January to go through that analysis?
Typically, my recollection, ma'am chair, is we have a number of uh work sessions where we meet with each of the departments over the course of a number of days. And we reach the budgets. We plan to do a very similar model this year with each department being available to the select board to review what's proposed in their budgets. Some will have zero changes except for maybe the increase in the wages um and salaries. And some will have things within the budget that have changed but have stayed within that guidance of zero percent. And some might have some new asks that are over asking. It's tough though at this point in time, because the way the budget process works is the revenues working with the FinCom aren't really solidified until later in the process. So the budget, when it gets from select board to the FinCom's next, is the next step in the process, there's really not a clarity around what the revenue side's gonna look like. The FinCom hasn't at that time necessarily landed on all the revenue projections. It's kind of at the last moment of, like we've done in the past, we need a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to have up with it, sure. And I go back and I talk with Scott Morrison and we come up with a hundred and sixty to balance.
Um, that, it, it's almost like two components. One is the FinCom coming up with that revenue number. The other one is a totally separate analysis, and that's as Jen, as chief of the fire department, what she's recommending be done in order to meet the service requirements and, and control her costs. So she's doing her own analysis of just, I imagine, what she needs to do to run her department. And then separately is the discussion with the FinCom about whether that's feasible this year or next year.
Yeah, so it will probably, right, so it's, it's our, our process in this, my process is the first to say, okay, that's just, we're not putting two hundred thousand dollars in, you know, something, that's an app. That's not a case, we don't have people ask, we're, we're very conscious of it. But that's, my process is then prioritizing and understanding as, in my role, what our priorities are from an organizational standpoint. Again, looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats and saying, okay, we're really, we're really the focus in over here to, to make sure that those liabilities are cut in half or that we don't have that liability more, anymore.
Jen would be coming in on one of those work sessions in January then? That's what you're envisioning?
Her and every, all the other departments that are, are, that would come in to, to go through their budget with you folks would. And just like Chief or Gary, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of things that we're gonna be, now that we, again, we've got, we've take, we've been able to take a really hard look this budget cycle across the board. Fire, police, DPW, TA's office, every, everybody, every department this year, we're looking at and saying, okay, within the guidelines of FinCom, how do we make this all work? And so we're um, we're gonna do our best to make sure that budget's a smart budget in the first step, but we know it's not the final budget, because there's the revenue side that we don't know. And we don't know the schools, we're kind of flying blind right now with what the schools are coming in at.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions on the budget at this point? Otherwise we'll move to the capital plan. Okay, capital plan, Kevin.
Yes, so um on the capital plan, we have our version two. In that budget comparatively to the first version, the change, I think that might be the easiest thing to do at this point is just reference. Our first change was within the um highway department. And what we did here was is I added in there a twenty thousand dollar um, call it a placeholder, if anything, for the um highway garage repairs. Building has not been touched.
Could you back us up for a second? We did not receive any documents this time in board docs, which is fine. In other words, we go back to the most recent one that we have of capital. Right. What are we dealing with now? You have updated the one that we had gotten in last several weeks ago?
Sure. Yeah, so basically with version one of the budget a month ago was, was submitted. We, we, to, to this, to the FinCom and like word. Version two um is, was uploaded onto board docs today.
Today you put it up there?
And the backup documentation's with it. And so the, so that, what you have in front of you is the um, you do have the backup information. There was like three changes on that in its entirety. And it was not one new item and the rest of it was just changing of the dollar amounts as we got better pricing. So it's nothing significant. Um, in the backup documents, we did a much deeper dive to make sure the backup documents were to the standard that I would expect them to be. Um, and that was part of the delays because there were some final pieces I needed to obtain before I submitted it. Um, and we, so that's what we have.
I apologize, may- maybe there was documents up there for the capital plan, but if they were, they were from several weeks ago.
No, I'm, Dick, I'm looking at version two with the date of twelve sixteen twenty-one.
Saying is when I picked it off yesterday or this morning, whatever, it was, it was the old version.
Yeah, Kevin said he put this up today, right?
Talking about and dealing with. How much difference is there between this version two and the previous one? There's twenty thousand dollars for highway and that's it?
Dollar amount, that is the only change and that is not in the free cash.
Okay, that's a very simple change, you could explain that. If that's the only difference, that's great. What, what, what is it, twenty thousand?
It was twenty thousand, there was one other change I made, which was I reduced the semi-under park and cemetery, I reduced the cemetery lot extension study and prep from seventy-five thousand to forty thousand. And I moved fifty, increased the Pine Grove Cemetery roadway and waterline to a hundred and sixty thousand. Which I received that from a hundred and ten, so it went up a net of fifteen thousand in the cemetery fund um account.
And what was the twenty thousand now for the highway?
In the high, under the highway department, thousand dollar line item, which I added as a placeholder, like I said, for the highway garage. If there's that building for the old highway garage. So the old highway garage is in, as if anyone's been in it in any time recently, um there's significant wear and tear on that building. It has not had any preventative maintenance or improvements or repairs in about twenty years. And with the consideration of the disposition of that property, I wanted to put in here reconno- rec- recognition that that might be something we need to look at. Now, my goal with that is it's not gonna come out of the free cash or, or funding of that sort. It would be something that a grant or ARPA or something like that might accompany that to allow us to make some basic repairs, like patching a hole in the roof that's visibly present, for example.
So good, just, just for our own purposes, you've explained the, the basic area, twenty thousand dollars, old highway garage, new addition. Somehow it has to be dealt with, but okay, we can discuss that at some point. And that you have moved um amounts, in the case of the cemetery, uh seventy-five thousand to forty thousand and vice versa from a hundred and ten to a hundred and sixty thousand for the roadways and that. That, that's the difference between what we had a couple of weeks ago, correct?
That is correct. Those are the.
Makes it easy for us to discuss from this point on, knowing that essentially if we're talking from version one, um unless we're talking about those things we just mentioned, that we're clean on the discussion. Okay.
Absolutely.
It probably would be helpful, Kevin, if Debbie could just highlight on like version two, those couple of areas that were changed so that we could hone in, because looking at it, I didn't know what was different. I didn't have the other version to access because it had been replaced by version two. So I wasn't able to look at anything, so just highlighting it so that we know where to focus would be helpful.
We'll put up on board docs the version one.
Well.
And even with that, though, just highlight.
But the difference is the issue.
Yes, just highlight the differences, because otherwise we have to go and compare version one, version two, all the way down, which is time consuming, if it's highlighted in yellow, we're just gonna hone right in to those changes.
Sure.
And if you could also distribute it, please, as an, an Excel spreadsheet, uh that way we can work with it much more easily. Printing it, whatever we want to do with it, works much better.
Okay.
So the net is then this went up thirty-five thousand, Kevin? Fifteen in park and cemetery and twenty in highway?
Um, fifteen increased in the cemetery trust fund account for how we're gonna pay for that. And the twenty thousand I put in the other category, because there's, I more wanted to represent and, and have for discussion purposes. I'm not looking for a Warren article under that one or anything like that. It's more of just saying that there's a need and, and having it documented on the capital report. So I don't, I, it's another twenty thousand, yes, but I don't, I, I don't know if we're gonna end up spending it. I don't know if it's something that we're gonna end up doing, but I know that it's something that I wanted to make sure was at least out there for noth- if nothing else, for discussion purposes. And how we might be able to go through our procurement or our disposition process and RP process. There might be something where we start meeting in the next few months with some potential people who could be interested in it or people who are just helping advise on the space like M A P C. And they say, you're never gonna have anybody do anything with us if you don't repair that gaping hole in the roof. And we might be able to cover that under the existing operating budget. But this was just a placeholder that was, I didn't want to miss the opportunity to put it out there for, for us to at least discuss if nothing else.
So how are we going to go through these? Um, I have a, uh, I have questions in the order in which they're presented in the um, and they're, and the requests. And I have some questions, how, how do we want to go through this?
Well, Kevin had last left it that if, because he went through the items the last time. If we had any questions about anything in particular to reach out to him so he had time to do some research. I'm not sure if you had an opportunity, Dick, to forward any questions to him or this is the first time he's gonna hear them?
Yeah, they may be the first time, I, I suspect he can answer some of them um pretty quickly.
All right, how many do you have, Dick?
Oh, uh, 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 ten of them maybe.
Okay.
About the items.
Yep, let's just go through them then.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. The first thing is the fiber network phases two and three. This was a surprise to, maybe I don't understand it, but it seems to me it was a surprise. We had a CARES Act, we did a network. We ensured that that network was a ring network such that if one piece of it broke, everybody had it, it was not a hub, it was not a star uh network. So that's a network, yeah, a star network of sorts. So as far as I understood it, we had connected all of our uh locations and we had a capacity beyond what we started to use it, which was largely the internet and for munis. So we had multiple, so to speak, channels that we could use on that fiber. Please help me understand, was two and three always known and what is it?
So the, 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 what we did for phase one was a cascading star. What we would, we pre- we priced out at the same time was um what additional needs we have. Phase two is to complete the ring um on the, the fiber network. Phase three is to connect to Danvers because there's the regionalization effort that we've undertaken as well. The regional, IT regional group has actually applied for grants to help us with that. So if it's CARES, I'm sorry, if it's ARPA, that's, that's possibility. There's also a state grant that's been applied for to help with that cost as well. Uh, or as I should say, in the works of being applied for. The security of our network is, is fine. This phase two and three allows us to expand on what we've already built. It sort of completes all the opportunities or options, I should say, that we would have with building out the network. Fully. And so with the ARPA money, it's, that our, our group is working to see if that's a priority project for us or not. We're fine with, we're fine without it. We could take it to the next level um if we decided to invest in it further.
So, so Kevin, in a sense, I understand too, it is a surprise to me because I believe that what we had put in would, had, had good uh design such that it could be out and things. So apparently that was not the case. We, we want this phase two to um make more robust the physical wa- um cabling between our facilities versus the phase one. So that's what phase two is. As far as I'm concerned, phase three, if it connects us to Danvers, should be a totally separate project. In other words, we can do one without the other and have no effect. I mean, they're totally different. One is to be able to service our intra-network and the other is to be able to connect to other towns. So uh at, at a minimum, even at this late stage now, it, it would seem to me you ought to, we, we need to make that two separate items and make clear how much money is in one, how much money is in the other and uh being able to make separate decisions on that. Since we're at it, and maybe you could add then somewhere in uh the, the request sheet, what are the eleven remote locations to the town hall? Now, I'm not sure that did, whether it meant all locations or was it saying the town hall plus eleven or a total of twelve locations? Do, do you know offhand and, and what they are? I, I can give you a list of some things I'm thinking of, but maybe you can just rattle them off.
So I know, I know that there's the different nodes that we have, heard the build out. I don't know if off the top I could give you the eleven, um but I could find that out now that I know that that's a specific question in, in real time, I could probably do it successfully, I'm sorry.
And in some ways, you know, I think I can ask the question kind of quickly too. Does it in school, does it include the schools?
Schools elected in the first phase not to participate.
Did, or not, okay. Then I assume that it would include the water treatment plant, the Boston tank and the Garden Street tanks probably, plus the pump houses, of course, uh, was the sort of thing that will get us up to around eleven, border of Magnesot, eleven buildings. But I think it would be great to add that to the uh information sheet so that everybody has that and knows, knows what it is that we're dealing with.
Absolutely, not a problem, we can add that in. Absolutely, not a problem. We can add that in.
Okay. Um, the the next item that I had was the uh master plan. Uh, could could it does refer to the, you know, where where did the money, where did the estimate come from? It said from a consultant. Could you uh identify who that consultant is?
So we've spoken with three different consultants thus far regarding master plan. Um, we did, again, we are.
Ones. You don't have to, you don't have to answer. If it was a simple answer, I would take it. The three, that's fine. That's good. We have multiple sources.
Hundred thousands a little bit less than what I think. It can get done within a hundred. It depends. It's kind of how much we wanted, how much, how much we require in the.
Here's my second thought on, here's my second thought on it. Um, it it's up to a hundred and thirty as you're kind of indicating here. Um, I would say that you uh no- need to go back to the state on on the grants or earmarks, whatever it is. And ensure that the that we increase it from one hundred to a hundred and thirty K and not attempt to use STM to try to um. Fund it. That that's my my input on it.
Why?
Any anybody else? Uh, you know, I'll stop talking if somebody's got some questions.
Why, why, why should this only be funded through grants?
Uh, it it could be funded by other things. I believe that this is something that we we have a majority of it. I think we should go after that as the way to do it.
No, no, I I get that and I'm I'm all for grants whenever or whatever, whenever possible. But you also pretty definitively said it should not be funded through.
Yeah, I I I don't think that we're ready to use STM um transfer funds thirty thousand dollars worth. To do something like this master plan. It's not typically the way we do things. We have to see how the Fin uh FinCom sees it too. But I I think for planning purposes, we should be going in that direction. Hundred and thirty for earmarks or grants. Whatever you've done in the past, just increase it from a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I don't think, Kevin, we don't have the opportunity to go back and just say we want more than a hundred thousand.
So the grant opportunity that we took advantage of was up to a hundred thousand dollars and we maxed it out with the grant Secretary Keeley's office at a hundred thousand. And.
Maybe sending us a message too then. Yeah, okay. Then maybe it does make a difference who the consultants are and what we do. May- maybe we have two phases of the master plan, a hundred thousand dollar phase. And the potential following year, thirty thousand dollars.
So what my reason to putting the thirty thousand in there was a little bit of a placeholder. Um, it's all gonna be dependent on the scope of work and how we want it. Put this the RFP together for this project. Um, if there's, as we go through the conversations with the planning board. And with select board, if there is a desire to have, you know, no less than this many public engagements. Um, that could, and it's a, it's a lot comparatively to what's typically done, that would add to the cost. Um.
This is a very healthy discussion. What I'd ask is, let's work out what that additional thirty is. And get the others on board as to whether it should or not. This this is a different discussion. I said, just, I assumed the third hundred and thirty was necessary, just as is. And go get it from the grants. That's not the issue now. The issue now is. What do we get for a hundred thousand? What do we get a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? And then the whole question is, it's the extent to which it's worth us, worth it for us to try to fund it ourselves, the additional thirty thousand dollars. So in input from that would be very helpful.
Well, I'm sorry, uh, I'm input from, I apologize.
Input from you as to the thirty, the difference between a hundred and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Thirty thousand dollars. If we don't get it, what won't we do? And who else is involved in deciding the planning board, whatever else that you mentioned?
So what we'll do is we're gonna order of operation. So right now we've met with three and we have a fourth group that we're gonna talk with. High level, let people know that we've um, we've applied for this grant that we believe will be successful. Um, and. So far, the conversation, that a hundred, they can do it in a hundred, but this is kind of what to expect. Um, another group, when we said what we had, didn't necessarily give us details of what that would look like or not look like. Um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna draft the scope of work or ultimately an RFP. And we'll know based on the feedback we're getting now. If that's what that might look like. Now, the scope's gonna be dependent on what Martha Morrison. And we're gonna put together a steering committee like they they've done in the past with planning exercises made up for members of the community. That'll help guide us on what our priorities are in that RFP and let us know if. This is a priority or that, and if this is a priority. At additional costs, we're gonna go beyond this and that's where we need to say, well, okay, if this is the opposite priority, how do we fund it? So by, what I was thinking by putting the thirty thousand in here is that. We don't get the grant, none of this happens. If we get the grant and we decide we really want to build out that scope. We've, my thought was rather than go into free cash and not know exactly and make an article for it. At STM, we'll have some, we'll be in that period where we'll know what the cost is gonna be because we'll have a vendor coming on. And we'll have some money that we could potentially point to to cover us if it's an extra five thousand, ten thousand, twenty or thirty. Um, so there's a lot of moving parts. And so sitting here today as the capitals do. I have a good amount of information and understanding. I couldn't sit here until the RFP goes out and we get responses and say this is definitely what the cost will be, what the scope's gonna be.
All right, but we will have that information prior to taking any kind of a vote on the STM. We could decide not to move that forward.
Absolutely.
That we don't have that right now.
Forty-five days to sixty days, we'll have clear clarity from the the Secretary Keeley's office, hopefully. We'll um have the RFP prepared um and ready to go. And we'll hopefully have it either back from, it'll be on the street and hopefully we'll get responses by then and understand where we're coming in. This was just basically saying if we had more need than and desires than what we have and available to us. There's a place to.
The typical way you would do an RFP would be to have the core things in it. In this case, what you expect to do with a hundred thousand dollars and have the add-ins that might add up to thirty thousand. But that means we need some discipline in thinking about what it is that we're trying to do. And I think that discipline is good overall, regardless of what's happening. Is to have that discipline in our own thinking as to what we're spending money for, for what purposes.
And I think that discipline comes in with Martha and the committee. When they think through exactly what they want the scope of this to be and then we'll get the estimates. So that thought process will go in there. It's just that we're gonna get the answer more back in two months. Kevin?
That's the hope. I mean, it's, uh, we've been waiting for some time on Secretary Keeley's office, to be frank, but um, we're working with them. We're, we're in their ear. Almost every other day asking what the status is. I'd say that my goal is to do a master plan for a hundred thousand dollars. When we've spoken with the groups, I've told them we have a hundred thousand dollars. So even if our scope grows. There's the potential that they might find a way to still meet what the grant has. I told them we don't have any, there's not another funding source. This, if we have, if we're successful with the grant, the hundred thousand dollars is what we have to spend.
Interest of time because it's already six twenty. Um, Dick, do one, since we understand your thoughts on this one, can you, your next point?
Okay, uh, police cruiser. Uh, in in a sense, what is the vehicle platform that we're looking at here? I guess there's a picture, but it's, uh, I guess it, the picture would suggest an EV Mustang. Um, I'm surprised that that's, if that's the case, but it's not clear in the write-up as to what it would be. Um, what what, at a minimum, I would ask is that whatever we put down for capital requests in the case of the cruiser, there's other issues. But the the key thing that we put down is that it is a somewhat informal, but uh. Well-understood within the industry approval of a vehicle as a police intercept vehicle. Which means that it has passed various types of tests, has additional strengthenings to it, uh, will take a rear end, whatever else. So I would hope that in the future, if we're going to acquire any vehicles for purposes of police cruisers. That they all, that any one that we would get would be approved as a quote, police intercept vehicle. Uh, is there a particular trade-in? And I have the same question for each of the trucks and that. Is there a trade-in on this one? And if there is, I think we want to put that in the capital request so we understand. Uh, that it's X amount of dollars less the trade-in or whatever the case may be. So that there's a clear understanding of what the the total cost that we're trying to deal with and how we're going to, and we're not. Are we adding vehicles to our fleet or are we keeping them the same? Uh, whatever. Uh, since um the picture of the EV is there, it helped me, this is uh maybe a little outside of directly the here. The capital acquisition here, but I was wondering, Chief, if you could help us, uh, because there's been some indications of operational cost efficiencies in that. If you could provide us with the data on the operational cost savings of the EV Mustang to date. I think that would be uh helpful for us to begin to get an idea of what it's meant to us. Those are my comments and thoughts. Um, but uh, but again, uh, the the absolute wording. That says essentially uh that the vehicle would be uh approved as a police intercept vehicle.
Um, can I ask, Chief, do you know already if it's going to be the same electric vehicle that you purchased before? Or are you still deciding what's going to work for you?
I think we're moving uh forward with the uh Mach-E Mustang for the next vehicle. I think it would be going backwards. We did a total cost analysis. Uh, it only makes sense to go with the Mach-E. Uh, we got recent quotes from all the, from the um, the supplier. And actually, the cost that we paid the forty-nine, three, five, one is only going up to forty-nine, seven, nine, nine. So it's only going up like three hundred and fifty dollars. So uh, that's uh absolutely incredible. We have had zero expenses on the, on the motor vehicle. It's not actually costing us anything. I did a whole analysis of the kilowatt hours. For the last four months at the police station and actually uh kilowatt hours has reduced by twenty-six hundred hours. So plugging the vehicle into a one-ten charger isn't costing us uh any additional money here. And so technically, it's uh, it operates uh at zero expense uh for the town. And then doing the analysis between a hybrid gas combustible engine and a Mustang. Uh, when you look at a overall of a five-year life expectancy of the vehicle, even though we know the life expectancy is going to be. Eight years of the Mustang as compared to five to six years for a gas combustible engine or a hybrid. Uh, we're looking at significant savings of uh probably around. Over the five years, the Mustang, we projected they're gonna have a cost of seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars as compared to. Thirty-six thousand for a gas combustible engine. So there's a twenty-eight thousand dollar savings. By going with a hybrid over a gas engine car. So those were the selling points. Uh, we've talked to Satina. Which builds the cages and the consoles for the vehicles. They anticipate six to nine months, they will have one manufactured. We talked to Addison Industries, they're building a console for it now. So it's gonna mirror the um. The cruisers that we have now from a configuration will be able to have a prisoner transport compartment. Michigan State Police is doing the performance testing on the Mustang uh at this time. And they are sort of the um go-to people, so they they will rate the vehicle. Uh, so they are using two of them and they're doing beta testing on them. Uh, as I stated before, I took that, this vehicle to mass. Mass State Police EVAC course. Uh, they, they don't certify vehicles because there's no this. There there's a misnomer out there that there's a before, there's a pursuit rated. Well, there's no such thing as being pursuit rated. And secondly, we don't do pursuits anymore. Uh, so it's it's a dangerous habit to have a pursuit vehicle. Uh, there's no way to, uh, I don't have the crash data on the vehicle. Uh, but again, uh, that there's no protection in the rear of the vehicles on the gas combustible or the hybrid. You have your engine protection uh this vehicle, but uh when people talk about pursuit rating or rating of police cars. Uh, there's uh, there's no real definition of that and it's actually just Michigan State Police or California Highway Patrol. Would be the two agencies. Mass State Police doesn't even do it. So um, I think, oh, I've taken this vehicle. We've put it through all the performance tests. We looked at the cost analysis for the last three to four months. It only makes uh sense to go forward. The uh cost of the veh- vehicle is only going up, as I said, three hundred and fifty dollars. There's no expenses. Uh, annual cost of the vehicle is gonna cost us about fourteen hundred dollars um as compared to the. You know, the uh money that I just uh stated that was gonna cost for a gas combustible or a hybrid. So it only, only really makes sense to me. The other question is, when we buy this vehicle, we will be trading one in. Uh, but that is a town decision. Um, I promised you last year that I have six marked cruisers. I'm not going for a seventh one, so there will be a trade-in. Uh, but again, I don't know what the trade-in value. Historically, we've only received about twenty-five hundred dollars uh as a trade-in, plus a cost of six or seven hundred dollars to have all the equipment removed. So we net eighteen hundred dollars. My personal opinion, I think a vehicle uh of this condition that we would be trading in. Has more value to the town of Totsfield than to go to auction where somebody else is gonna make in profit off uh. A piece of equipment that has been maintained for six or seven or eight, eight years. But that's not my decision. I. I will give the ti- the card to the town. I will tra- trade it in. I'm at the wishes of uh whatever the. Select board decides uh for that, but I do not need another marked cruiser. I stated that last year. And I am not wavering on my decision regarding that. So. I don't know if there's any other answers, questions that you may have, but thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Town Minister.
Sorry to interrupt. I was just gonna, um, one of the conversations that uh Chief and I've had is to the. Conversation you just said about the trade-in value and is there greater value to the town by maintaining or own, continue to own a vehicle? Um. Talk about looking at the budget from a liability standpoint. Right now, people are using their personal vehicles to do town business. Uh, getting mileage reimbursements of fifty-five cents and fifty-six cents, I think it is, um, a mile. Um. I'm gonna ta- when the time comes that the next vehicle's purchased, I'm gonna have a, do a hard analysis on what the value is comparatively. If we have a fleet vehicle for town hall, for example, uh, for inspectional services as an example, um, versus not. And there's more to it than just the bottom line and the dollars um to look at, but that's something that I've, I've been committed to and that Chief and I've spoken about previously. So um, just wanted to make sure that that was something, um, it's.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Just Chief, one quick question. The forty-nine, seven, nine, nine that you mentioned. Um, the difference between that and what's on the uh budget here for seventy-one thousand, is that the? The incrementals, are those the lights and the add-ons that bring it up to seventy-one?
Yeah, so we, what we did was we took the cost of the vehicle that we projected last year, added five percent. Um, it actually should come in lower than that because we were expecting a five percent increase. That we historically fought has always told us that they, they do. And uh this year, we actually got an actual quote for uh a Mustang. And it came in as that, which I was like absolutely surprised. So the, you know, if you wanna make an adjustment off the uh seventy-one thousand. We're probably looking at uh the number of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that will be the outfitting of the vehicle with all the lights and all the equipment in the vehicle. There will be some equipment that will be swapped over uh from the, the car that we are taking out of service. Or giving to the town or or trading in. Uh, so a lot of the equipment, the patrol rifle, less lethal shotgun. Stopsticks will all be transferred over so we're not reoccurring those additional uh costs.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Push bar be pushed over?
Uh, tha- that vehicle cannot uh hand away push bar or a light bar, so uh tho- those. Those pieces of equipment will not be carried over.
You mentioned fourteen hundred dollars. I assume that was the electricity that was used. I didn't really follow, but I heard you said it cost the fourteen hundred dollars.
So when I, when I did a five-year analysis, we we basically took a look at what the energy, the en- energy. Cost of the vehicle, the kilowatt per hour by the number of miles that we're driving the vehicle. We anticipated it would be to. About thirty-two hundred dollars over a five-year period of time. We know that we're going to have to put tires on the vehicle. Um, at least probably three occasions um over the five-year period of time. Uh, those are about two hundred and fifty dollars per tire. So that's a three thousand dollars over the five years. And then we know we're gonna have to change the brakes at least once. Um, so that's about a thousand dollars.
Fourteen hundred dollars times five would give us what you estimated as.
Exactly.
Over the first five, over the.
Exactly, Mr. Yang. Perfect.
I I take it you're not comfortable, you're not interested in providing me with the data about the existing vehicle? How it's been used, how many miles we put on it, um, what kind of return we we've gotten from the use of air conditioning. Or whatever else that we know, not just the three-point-three, but rather the, the real miles per whatever. Uh, you you don't want to do that? Uh, you don't want to provide that information?
No, provide anything that you want. We've used the.
I would like that information then. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, yes, uh, we've used, we've used.
Helpful for us to to work with.
Oh, no, I'll share anything and I, and I have the stuff readily available. Uh, we have used the vehicle for two thousand, three hundred and thirty miles. Oh, no, I'll, I'll share anything and I, and I have the stuff readily available. Uh, we have used the vehicle for two thousand, three hundred and thirty miles.
And if you could let us know, you know, the, the approach that you are using. I haven't seen it down at town hall recently, uh, at least. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what your approach is to recharging it and how that has worked out as far as, you know, the part of the whole shift, uh, part of the shift. Those, those kinds of things would be very, uh, helpful and interesting for us so that we understand what we're getting into, especially if we're getting more than one of these. That would be great. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely. I have all that.
Glad to work with you on the collection of, you know, the kind of data to have.
I, I, I always welcome your help, sir. And, uh, we, we have the data, uh, here. I'm more than happy to share it. I can email it out. I'll send it to the, uh, Town Administrator's office. And then, uh, um, the Town Administrator can filter it out and vet it.
Thank you, Chief.
Next one?
Okay, uh, just a, a quick question on a trade in. The highway, uh, F-three-fifty truck, uh, that's going to be a trade in, correct? Yes? The answer is yes. Okay. I saw her shaking her head. Okay. Pine Grove Cemetery Infrastructure. The, uh, Cemetery Commissioners and most written, uh, most specifically uh, responsible for the Perpetual Care Trust Fund. I think, uh, we, we need to understand some things before we agree to, you know, so to speak, so to speak, how much we're spending. And order of magnitude, it would be what is the current value in the, of the Perpetual Care Trust Fund? And that's, uh, we can get close to that by just looking in the average, in the annual report. But what is it right now? What is our assumed rate of return? And what is our estimated annual additions, quote, revenue, uh, for the next ten years going into it? So that we can try to get a ba, uh, an understanding of where the balance is between how much we're taking out and how much we're able to put in to maintain it as perpetual care. So, uh, that data, uh, it, it's really, it's ours, it's our responsibility and it's, it's important to have that.
Why don't you send over Dick to Kevin, your specifics, like the specific things you're requesting? Maybe you could just send him a quick email so he's sure he's got everything that you're looking for and he can do that offline.
Okay. Um, that, uh, the Park and Cemetery, uh, thirty-five hundred dollar, thirty-five hundred weight truck, uh, model. Uh, that's a trade in also from the Park and Cemetery? Two thousand and ten vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Um, cemetery expansion, uh, interesting that we changed the amount of dollars and that. But just to understand at a high level, because if nothing else, we'd have to answer perhaps at, uh, at town meeting is, um, the, the, uh, the extent of what we're trying to do. How many acres or how much percent addition we're adding to it? Some kind of a measure that indicates what we're doing. And we're going to do the entire property that remains, uh, with a plan, not necessarily to, uh, to prepare it, the entire property. Or, but are we going to have a, an overall plan for the entire property? Or are we only trying to do a plan for another thirty percent or something of that? We, we, we'd really like to have that, Gary. So we understand what it is that we're up against. And it also relates in part to the things I was referring to as the Perpetual Care Fund because it's a logical use of the Perpetual Care Fund. Well, we all have to agree that it is, um, for, for, for purposes of expansion. Um, so th, those things, um, uh, would, would be helpful to understand what your thinking is. We don't need it now, but it, it, you know.
Um, Gary, did you want to say something?
I have a couple of short answers if it helps, uh, currently, uh, in regards to some of Mr. Gant's questions right now. So there's several accounts that would be used for this. I have some of you, Marshall Land or Mr. Gant, because I know you were both Commissioners, might know. So we have a perpetual care account that the interest bearing on that right now is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and ninety-three cents. I have a sale of lots account with the revenue in that right now at two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. And then I have another revolving account through the cemetery that is currently sitting at eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven. These are the areas what we would look to use if this went forward in that regard. To your question, Mr. Gant, on the expansion, it's probably easier right now to say somewhere in the vicinity of four to six hundred graves with this initial expansion I would like to do. I had a grander scheme. I have since, uh, realized that's not probably something we can do right now. But with the uptick and the, uh, the, there was not a lot of planning for the space that is becoming very scarce for grave sites in there. This is something that has to get done sooner rather than later. We're running out of places to bury people. I hate to say that.
Gary, I believe, uh, as, as the Park and Cemetery Commission wound down, we were basically talking about a desire to not prepare the entire cemetery, but have a plan. Because it seems as though in the past, you would say, not you, but the, the royal you would say, oh, well, we need to expand, so we'll just expand over here. But nobody took a holistic look at the entire, entire piece of property and said, well, the next time we need to expand, we should do it here. And then after that, here, and then after that, here. So we know what the end game is for the entire cemetery. So is this looking for that plan? Just the, someone to look at the entire property and say, the next time you need to expand, you do it here. And the time after that, you do it here and you do it this way.
Uh, this particular one is, is not that type. It's, it's not the going up and looking at a certain area, we can get a hundred here, we can get fifty here. The, the, if we plan out the remaining hundred and twenty-eight acres, that is going to take a great deal of money to come out of somewhere to get the engineering and develop this. And I hate to put it this way, but the practical way I look at things, this is a mini subdivision. You need to maximize revenue. I hate to say it, but that is what it comes down to. And how that will get designed out with a tier system that would run all the way down to Bear Hill and possibly butt up against Haverhill Road, which all that property is cemetery property. Um, this particular one is the top of our cemetery right now. We are in dire needs and I can't progress with this. I tried to this past season. Couldn't get it done because I came to the realization, I had to go to town meeting for vote, um, to get the next section cleared. That will pretty much, that'll put a sum in the four to six hundred, um, grave lots available for full end or ash moving forward.
Okay. So, so the expansion, you're looking at again, you just said it, I think, four to six hundred grave lots.
I think so. Yes, sir. I, I think.
Forty thousand.
I'm sorry, yes.
And that's the forty thousand dollars that Kevin pointed out.
In, in that will be, part of that will be, yes, possible engineering to lay that out. Part of it will be tree clearing by the tree company to open that space up for us as well.
Can, can, can we, can we, uh, uh, very quick, you provide a lot of information very quickly. Can, can we get this all, um, kind of put together as a plan with it, with the dollars? This is the engineering, this is the, the clearing, whatever it may be, so that we understand what it is that we're dealing with?
I can only give you ballparks because both will cost money to find out. I can try to get a.
Ballparks are better than nothing.
That's what we have right now is the ballpark price.
And it's two components. One is the design and the other is the clearing.
And, yeah, and a part of that could be the actual general contractor, once the trees are cut and the area is stumped, to grade it to what I think will maximize our ability to take in revenue.
I don't think at this point, it's probably worth the additional time and money to try to fine tune that. That seems like a good ballpark based upon your understanding of this, Gary. I'm not sure at this point in time, we need to chisel that down to something.
I can't, if, if it helps any in this conversation. I did have three quotes for at least the tree part of it. That's the mainstay of this, of the clearing. I had a lowest bidder, um, which, uh, had come in at a great price. But when I realized that the sale of lots money where I thought this should come from had to be a town meeting vote. It had to get shelved till I came to you and then we got this to move forward, if possible at all. I, my fear is, is, is Marshall is, is quite right. There was a lot of, well, we can throw a hundred here, fifty here. Well, this is the next logical step. There is a section behind this for some reason that was kind of prepped, but you really can't get to it. So this next section at the top of our cemetery where all the Scotch pines are that are nearing their end of life, if you will, is the logical step to get us a good, I would say, I, I'm hoping we, we calm down because the last forty years, we next week have hit forty-two funerals already this year. Um, and we're up from, I think, the average I was told, the twelve to eighteen that Steve Shepard had told me. And this is, this is the last four years, thirty-nine to forty-two funerals. And we're already there with, next week I have two, one just before Christmas Eve.
Okay, I'm sure we can go into a lot more detail, but we're really running out of time here. So Dick, is there anything else that you'd like Gary to share with you offline?
Good.
In addition to this.
You want to spend some time, Gary? That would be great. Good.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Next one, Dick?
The, uh, library roof, what roof areas are we referring to? Is this the essentially the extension and the rubber roof on the, on the back part? Or is it the slate or, or what is it? And secondly, as, as part of this, it's a little interesting that it, the estimate is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is fine. But the design is, uh, thirty, or the design, yeah, the design, construction documents are thirty thousand dollars. Typically ten percent is what you normally think of when you, or, or less, seven to ten percent when you think of a project. Do, do you have a feeling for what those things are, Kevin?
Um, so I know I met, I've met with Laura on this. We met with it, um, a couple of weeks ago. And I, I did ask her specifically, you know, the number and things like that. She worked with Paul Anastasia, our facilities, um, point person here in town. And Paul and her worked on coming up with what the scope and, uh, potential scope. They haven't put out the bid yet, obviously, and understanding of what the general cost to have that prepared would be. Um, I, I, to be frank, um, you know, Paul being in-house support, um, and I, him being physically here one day a week, I haven't had a chance to circle back with him on that number directly. But Laura did confirm with me that she had spoken with him and that's where the number was derived from. So, um.
Fair enough. Which roofs is it? What roof are we talking about? Roofs?
Uh, uh, my understanding, we talked from Laura, that there's a number of leaks that occur on a regular basis. It needs to be patching on it. And she did not, um, I believe it was the entirety of the roof, the way she explained it to me. I did not ask specifically if it was this location, that location. I, the way it was presented.
So Kevin, maybe you can just get clarity on that.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Great.
The last one that I have is, um, the, the library is looking for water fountains. How many? Seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars? How many of it?
I believe it's one. It's one. I believe it's one. That's my understanding.
Does it, has it, is plural? So it's, makes it seem like it's more?
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Well, maybe we could just get Laura to give us a number on that too, Kevin?
Yeah, she said, the description she put in there replaced the twenty-year-old water fountain. So yeah, I can see why it might be plural, uh, the new ones that are more, yeah. So I'll double check. My, I thought she, I was under the impression in the conversations, in the budget conversation, that there's going to be more money allocated to the maintenance line item. And that this was going to be like a phased approach with the water fountains, but I'll double check and see if that's, that's one or two.
I suspect if what they're after is a water filling one, uh, and there's multiple wa, water fountains that they're looking for, uh, that maybe one of them should be replaced with a bottle fillings. I'm sure that somebody can go downstairs or upstairs to go find the bottle filling station if that's the key thing that they want. Just, just a thought. Um, okay. The la, the last note I have on the overall, however, Kevin, is that in accordance with the guidelines, uh, the capital requests, they used to say the combination of free cash and appropriations would be equal to, uh, three hundred thousand dollars or less. But we're, we're going to go for three hundred thousand dollars and I know that we are over that.
We'll get the car.
The request would be that you, uh, take out what it is that gets us to three. And I'm sure as the FinCom has indicated, they will consider things over three. But they need to know what are the ones that we have to have, so to speak. What, what are the ones that are most important and valuable to us for three hundred thousand dollars? And then we can tell them about the other ones that we want.
If the FinCom requires three hundred thousand at the end of the day, and as we talked about in the past, I, I offered that to the FinCom and they said, keep in the what you have at the three fifty-four, three fifty-four, six. Um, and I know I've, I've talked with Chair Ramoudis about that a couple of times. And, um, I do have the ideas of if, based on free cash, which should be healthy, free cash can't support the full three fifty-four, we'll be able to move, um, and probably move. I think there's one in particular item that can get us to where we need to be from the, the guidance perspective. So we're, we do know if that is the case, um, where we would go.
You know the item that you're going to pull out to get to three hundred? Thank you. That's the answer. Okay? And if you just want to highlight it with a comment, you can put a comment in there saying, this is the, the additional one that we need because of, but it's, it's over the three hundred. That's great. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Any other questions or feedback to Kevin on the capital? No? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you, Kevin. I know there's a lot of work that goes into this and appreciate you taking all the comments and questions.
Thank you.
My pleasure. And please, if there's any questions you have following this, um, I know, Mr. Gant, you're, you're going to reach out to a couple of the department heads. Uh, but feel free to myself or to the team, if there's any clarity anyone needs additionally, uh, we're available, uh, to support that. So I'll update this. I know we talked about the top, highlighting a couple of the changes. Uh, we'll get a version of sort, uh, that looks at, at that. And we'll just get that back information that we were logging in. Mr. Gant, if you want to email me the list, I took notes, but as Chair Ramoudis said, if you want to send me a list, that's, that's welcomed as well.
That's about the cemetery funds. Yes.
Uh, any questions?
The percentages, that's what I would, yes. I'll, I'll send you that.
Um, okay. Sounds good. All right. Um, then our next item is to move into executive session at this point. Could I get a motion, please? Thank you, Kevin, and good night to everyone. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to executive session for the purposes of exemption three, I believe it is.
Two.
Two? Okay.
Exemption two.
Discuss the employment agreement with the town, with the town administrator. Well, not with the town, concerning the town administrator.
Okay. Do I, um, and we will not return to regular open session?
And we will not return to regular open session. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and that was, uh, six fifty. And that was Dick and Cam.
That, Dick, you'll catch, yeah.
Uh, but she's leaving now. She's not going to be staying for minutes. Yeah. Okay. And thank you, Debbie, and good night. Hey, you got to do roll call? Um, yeah, sorry. I didn't know if you needed to be on for that. So, um, we'll go. Uh, Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson? Um, Boyd, you're on mute. I could see you say yes, but while you're doing that, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye. I've gone mobile a little bit. That's why you can't see me anymore. So.
Yes, I did see that. Okay. And I don't know who Nate L. is, but if you could, uh, log off, please. Debbie, do you know who Nate L. is?
No, but I'm going to remove them. Thank you. Lynn, Lynn, I'm making you the hosts. Okay, thank you.